School boundary presentation, thank you. Dr. Olet, appreciate that. So, for tonight, there will be a presentation from our consultant regarding the process, the recommendation, and then following that, there will be a public comment period, at which time, anyone in attendance has the ability to provide comments. We're going to go for three minutes, and do we have a timekeeper? Tim, Tim will keep the time on that. And it will not be an opportunity for conversation or dialogue, but rather comments, and if you have questions, you can certainly put them out there. Then, they will get, they could get re-asked by board members, because once the public comment period is done, then we're going to have our first-ever discussion among the board members about boundaries. Up to this point in time, the board has not had any direct discussion about the options, other than maybe repeating a comment that might have been overheard at any of the committee meetings, but this has been the consultant and the committee dealing with this since April. So, we've had seven months, including two public input sessions, and so, the opportunity has been there also for online, and I can tell you that I've read all of the online comments in this latest round that were presented, and so, this will be another option, in addition to the online for public comment after the presentation. Dr. Olet, do you have anything to add?
No, I think that about sums it up. I'll be turning it over to Rob Schwartz and Craig Menozzi to do the presentation for the consultants.
Right, very good. Gentlemen?
Well, good evening. It's great to be back in Hudson this evening to provide...
And to provide the recommendation to the Board of Education here tonight. Just wanted to go through a few slides regarding the process and how we got to this point this evening. Just some of the different process roles, number of different groups that were involved in the process. The board, as the board chair said this evening, provided the framework for this process at a meeting this past February, so we've been going at it with this process for about 10 months right now. The board prioritized their boundary criteria, created a framework again for the process, and tonight will be the night that they will receive the recommendation from the committee for the 1920 school year. Also listed on that sheet in front of you are the different roles that were played by the administration. RSP is a company represented by Rob Schwartz, the owner, and myself. The committee and the community were the different people, and their roles are defined Wanted to mention a little bit about the timeline that we've used. Again, as I mentioned, it started with the board defining the process and the framework this past February. We had five different committee meetings. The committee members are listed later on in your handout. Two public input sessions, and then our recommendation, of course, tonight, and then, if all goes well, the board will plan on acting on a boundary adjustment recommendation at their meeting on January 14th. I certainly do want to commend the board regarding the process. It's great when we're looking at the 1920 school year, and certainly if we get a recommendation approved by the board in January, that will allow a considerable amount of time to make that transition for the 1920 school year. Here are the committee members. Again, I want to commend and thank the committee members who put in a great deal of time on the process. They're listed there, and again, they were here for five different committee meetings. And there were the guiding principles, again, that we used. I want to also mention the prioritized board criteria, the top three criteria. The board looked at a number of different criteria for the process, but the three that the board prioritized, again, were duration of the boundaries. Obviously, the board would like whatever is recommended to give us as long a duration as possible, make sure that we can get a number of years out of this process. And one of the reasons, the major reason why we're here this evening, I've been here through the process, is that we had some buildings that were getting crowded, we also had some buildings that were underutilized, so we wanted to make sure with the projected enrollment, we're utilizing the elementary buildings the best that we can. And also, the contiguous attendance areas, that was the third criteria, as used by the board. The next slide is a process that we use through RSP called Academics, Culture, and Economics. It's a relationship between all three pillars and the impact that they have on each other, and it's a framework that starts the larger boundary discussion, and something that we use in all the processes that we conduct. And then consensus was important, that we define the word consensus as used by the committee. The group will consider consensus when 51% of the group shows support of an item being discussed. Fortunately, in our process, when we had an item being discussed and we needed to make a decision, we had much higher consensus. It was generally always at least 2/3, if not anywhere from 75% to 90%, when we asked the committee to vote on a particular item. As always, with any process, we had some ground rules, and we reviewed these with the committee. These were established by the committee during the first meeting, and these are the ones that they decided that we would use for our work together. So now, I'd like to turn it on to, turn it over to Rob Schwartz.
All right. Good evening. Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, board. We're giving you a nice gift of information from the committee, so what I wanted to provide you is some overview of how we got here. So Craig gave you the guiding principles, the prioritized boundary criteria. We had lots of good conversation with the committee members, and as I look out, I see several of the committee members here. We started out with trying to understand what neighborhoods mean to the community, because if you're in the unincorporated rural area, that means something different than if you're in the core area of Hudson. So, lots of conversation about what a neighborhood was going to be defined as, how does this fit into the conversation of which building they go to? When we left the conversation with the committee, we had, from the public input, we had Area A, Area B, Area C, and I'll go into that when I show the maps, and from those three, we were able to get consensus on where they ideally thought those three areas would go, based on, again, how it goes back to your guiding principles and your prioritized boundary criteria. They also had a lot of conversation about, you know, do we move some of the areas that we were showing in the public input, like with Holton? We were taking a small piece out of Holton and moving it to North Hudson. We also had conversations that were built into our modeling. Tonight, our focus isn't on the modeling of what we forecasted with the enrollment, but there had to be an understanding that we knew there were the developments south of here, and then the development that's west of here were factored in, that we knew there was going to be some sort of development activity. So, we need to have space wherever those areas are assigned for those future students to go, to fit your criteria of having a duration of boundaries. We also knew that there were going to be a lot of turnover. The value of the modeling that we have with these planning areas that we've created, we've been seeing and analyzing and forecasting what that turnover could be, and it's different in each part of the district. We also knew that some of the committee members felt that even with these final changes, the plan will maybe not meet all of the criteria as they viewed it. And I think that the point of that is, there is no perfect plan, but when we set out on this journey, and if you remember, we talked about that back in the spring, that this truly is a journey, we're not going to have a plan that everybody's going to be happy with, but we're going to have a plan that hits what you ideally wanted to see with those guiding principles and the prioritized boundary criteria, and then fit within the parameters of some of the costing for sections that administration was looking over when they finally received what this plan could look like. We also had a lot of conversation about the student options, and I think that's something the district will comment on later. One of the maps that I put in here, just so that it would illustrate how we're trying to factor in growth, back when we did the enrollment analysis, the three colors that are represented on this map represent it's areas that either were currently developing, which were the green areas, those that would potentially develop within the next five years, those are the yellow areas, and then the areas that would be further out would be the purple. And I think what I wanted to bring up for the benefit of those here and for board members, a lot of those purple areas, when we get out to the east side, on both the north and south side of 94, we have limited infrastructure, in fact, really no infrastructure for the densities of certain type of development to be what you see in the city limits of Hudson, and we've had no expectation from the county or the townships indicating that there was going to be development when we did those studies. So again, that, those areas, I wanted to highlight. So, a little bit more about the committee recommendation. So, we had a supermajority of the committee like what the conversation ended at our last committee meeting, and so, I'm going to explain some of that. I'm going to go to the map, and I'll kind of hit each of these first few bullet points. So, on this first map, here we have the current attendance areas, and I may come back to this for reference of future questions. But when we went to committee meeting number five, we had these three areas that were classified as A, B, and C. And so, from that meeting, we had 76% of the committee members feel that Area A, they're up on the northeast side, that's in Hudson Prairie, that it would remain at Hudson Prairie. Area B, we had 87.5% that thought in this map, it was being shown as, well, we're showing it as EP Rock, but if we look, actually, I'm looking at the wrong map. When it's Hudson Prairie, they wanted it to go back to EP Rock, so it's currently at EP Rock, keep it at EP Rock. Area C, to remain at Rivercrest, that was 91.7%. Then, we had some conversation, there was an area that early on, by the railroad, up in Hudson Prairie, we had that moved to Willow River, and that moved back to Hudson Prairie, we had 82.6%. Then, we had the conversation of the area that was in Holton. I don't think my mouse shows you where I'm talking about, but up here was to move it back into Holton, so remain at Holton, and so, that was 91.7%. And then, we had areas of North Hudson moving to Willow River, and they wanted it to go back to North Hudson, and that was 60.9%. A good majority of the committee members felt that with these changes, they felt really comfortable with the body of work that they had presented, that it was meeting the guiding principles and the boundary criteria. However, we had some conversation, when I go to this next map, which is what was submitted to you, the Area 1, which is on the east side, the rural area that's been currently at Rivercrest, in the plan, they would go to Hudson Prairie. And so, they left that for the board consideration of what you may do with that particular item. So, how this looks with the enrollments is, was put on the map, it's also shown here in this presentation. And one of the things that I know administration wanted me to highlight when we're looking at the capacity numbers, so we have a max capacity and an ideal capacity, and so, the ideal capacity is basically 85% of the maximum capacity. So, if we're just putting all of the kids in the building, that maximum capacity would be the target of how many kids you could physically put into that building and still get the education that you want to have in that building. However, the ideal capacity allows for some of the ebb and flows of class sizes and different needs for the programming that would take place in that building. So, for instance, when we look at Holton, and it's over that ideal capacity in '22, '23, it's still at just slightly over 85% of the maximum capacity. So, here you can see what the numbers are for each of the buildings, so the thing that we tried to target was making sure that all of the buildings were at or below what that ideal capacity is. And this goes back to one of the questions, comments, that some committee members had is, maybe they would have liked to have seen more students in some of the buildings, let's say, North Hudson or Willow River, but we have some, and that may come out in some of the questions, some limitations of how you can get the students moved into those areas and make some good sense in how you make those changes. So, this became one of the core elements of understanding of what the numbers could look like. We had a lot of conversation about the students that would be impacted by the boundary change, and so, our team with the data sets looked at the '18, '19 data, and we had two different ways that we looked at the students that would be impacted by the boundary change. The top table reflects that physically, we know wherever a student in '18, '19 lives, and how does that relate to the changes of the proposed committee recommendation of a plan? And so, you can see the breakdown of, based on reside, we have 91 EP Rock K4 students impacted, and we have 101 Rivercrest students impacted for this 192. We look at the attend, we know where the students are actually attending, so there's been some school choice of students to the different buildings, and so, if that is changing from where they would actually be assigned, this gives that breakdown, so you can see, see it two different ways, and we wanted to show you it this way, so that you would understand that there is going to be students that are impacted beyond just the physical change, and a lot of this gets back to some of the board policies and desire to have students going to the buildings in which the attendance areas are signed. So, that kind of walks us through the different maps, the data that was on here, and a lot of the conversation that took place with the committee members. So, that concludes our portion of the presentation, and so, I turn it back over to the board.
With that, I guess we are going to have a public comment, and I don't know, do we have a system set up where folks are signing up, or? All right. I guess we'll just do what first come, first served, then. So, if you want to raise your hand, and we'll call in to come forward, just ask that you please state your name, and then maybe state which school, attendance area, attendance, which school your kids go to now, as opposed to what, you know, may end up being changed, but just where you have your kids going now, if anywhere. Maybe you're here just to watch the process, see it enacted, but is there anyone that would like to go first? All right, sure. Thank you for starting us. Please state, start with your name and...
Can we put the map up, so while we're talking about it, just so you guys have a reference?
See, would that be, which slide? The Committee 5 option?
Or the last proposal, that one out.
Committee recommendation, okay. That's the slide that's up right now.
Jeremy Proll, Rivercrest School District. I would like to just comment on the process and the outcome. For me, the biggest failure of the process is the area number one. I think throughout the open committee forums, there was a community input collected in two phases, one on neighborhoods, and the second on, there was two maps showing, and that area wasn't being moved, and I think, you know, that was subsequently moved later. So, for me, you know, the failure in the process is that there was no community input collected. And the biggest geographic area impacted, the largest number of students, and the largest percentage impact, if you look at the percentage change in Rivercrest. The second thing, for me, was just transparency. I think the most important number for me and a lot of the committee members that I've heard is, how many students are impacted, right? And it took to the very end of the process to be able to see that number, so it lacked transparency. I appreciate that the process was very open, there was input collected, but for me, it just lacked that transparency, and what's the real impact? And even this week, in the school district letter, you know, there was a comment that fewer than 200 students are impacted, but it appears in the presentation, that real number is closer to 330. So, again, lacks transparency, and that builds distrust within the community, so I just asked for that transparency. The final thing I would comment is just, you know, the outcome. I see, you know, two schools, one is at 50% capacity projected, another one at 60% in five years, and another one at 95%. I don't see a balancing within the school district, so that concerns me with the outcome. So, in regards to Area 1, I would comment on three things. I see three options there that were presented throughout. I saw the border on 94, which to me is the most natural border and would move the least amount of students. I saw a very early version of this map that kept all of those people there, allowed for the development within the Riverview area, and I think it projected 90% capacity for Rivercrest. So, my question would be, if 95% is okay for Holton, why is it 90% okay for Rivercrest? We could move a lot fewer kids and get the same objection there. The second option was presented at the community forum, and that would be the border around County Road N. Again, not my favorite option, but far superior, I think, to this map, it moves far fewer students, and I think you saw that in the feedback from most of the committee members, right? That was the majority of the feedback, you know, how are children impacted today? Five-year projections are great, but what's the real impact today? The projections may or may not come true, but of course, we have to plan for the future. And then, the third option was what was presented. I would just ask you to kind of do that same objective analysis, evaluate the process, evaluate the outcome, and I would ask you to vote no to this map. So, appreciate the time, and thank you for allowing some real community feedback here. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for your comments. Anyone else? All right, I saw a hand in the back go up. Please come forward, state your name, and the elementary school area where you're from.
Good evening. My name is Amy Bast, and our children go to Hudson Prairie. And I would like to address the small pocket that is between County Road A and Scott Road, up in the right-hand corner off of McCutcheon Road, and I would like to respectfully ask that the board reconsider moving this boundary from Scott Road to County Road A. Looking at page eight of your, of the current PowerPoint presentation, the guiding principles, I would like to address a few items here. Bullet number three, the committee recognizes the power of an elementary school to create community and make it more accessible for families, making it more accessible for families is essential. The neighborhoods in this area are very close and reside all to the east of County Road A. They create opportunities for families to carpool, to school functions and activities, allowing parents and students to volunteer together at various school events, and it creates a better overall transportation opportunity. These neighborhoods are also closer to Hudson Prairie. Bullet number four, the boundary can anticipate future growth of the neighborhood. To my understanding, there are less than six children who would be impacted by this change of moving these children from Willow to Prairie. Bullet number five, the boundary proposal should utilize all available district resources. By moving this boundary to County Road A, the transportation resources within the district will be better utilized. Currently, there are buses for both schools, so both Prairie and Willow that are driving down Scott Road, and with the limited amount of elementary students going to Willow from this pocket area, it would better utilize the busing resources to have these children ride and go to Prairie with the rest of the neighborhoods in that area. Bullet number six, considering boundary lines that are natural and man-made boundaries, County Road A is a much more natural boundary than Scott Road. By keeping the boundary on Scott Road, it creates a little pocket of a small population that goes to Willow, especially with County Road A being much more heavily trafficked, again, keeping these residential areas together. Moving on to page 10 of your PowerPoint presentation, the ACE concept, Academics, Culture, and Economics, understanding that the committee and the board are trying to keep this focused on what's most important, the students, staff, families, and community. If we pay particular close attention to the cultural pillar, there are several items, including activities, organization, student engagement, parent involvement, and safe and caring environments that create more cohesiveness by moving the boundary to County Road A. These neighborhoods can do all of these above-mentioned items, and even better. In closing, I would like to ask the board to consider moving the boundary from Scott Road to County Road A. This would still allow Hudson Prairie to remain at its ideal capacity of 529 students. Thank you.
All right. And, excuse me, Amy, I just want to, I just wanted to clarify again, because you're talking about that...
The little green section, right up there in the right-hand corner, that touches the pink, County Road A.
Yeah, that's, that's above McCutcheon.
That's currently for Willow, yeah, but asking it, the boundary to be moved to County Road A, so that that little pocket of green would actually go to Prairie and be pink.
And those students are currently now...
At Willow.
At Willow.
Yep.
So, you want them to move?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Thank you for that clarification. Other comments? I saw other hands, so... Yes, please. Yes.
Hi, Emily Gregerson, representing Rivercrest, the Area 1. So, I want to echo a lot of comments that the first comments are made, but I would also like to say that County Road N, you know, in one of the proposals, County Road N was the barrier or the boundary, that divides our neighborhood for those of us out further on the right side of the map, so if there were to be some consideration about moving this back to Rivercrest, 94 would be better, because we are a community out in that neighborhood, both north side and south side. And plus, from a busing standpoint, it would be odd to bus out there and send some kids up north and some south. So, echo a lot of the same comments that the first guy made. I don't, I guess one of my concerns is that we're moving so many kids from Rivercrest up to Hudson Prairie. Hudson Prairie, I think, is like going from 64% ideal capacity to 99% in the first year, and I just wonder, is it really necessary to do that? And can Hudson Prairie handle that kind of intake? Busing, you know, it's a large area that we're covering, so I just hope you guys maybe consider that, maybe really look at that area and say, hey, does this really need to be moved? In looking at all the projections and all the numbers, Rivercrest was fine from a capacity issue, so, and then I also say, like, with the transparency thing, I mean, I had to pull a lot of this data myself. Even the numbers that I came here with today, it says draft, but I pulled this, this presentation last night, and the numbers were different from what you put up today. I mean, I understand that things change, and you're pulling stuff together at the end, but just from the process standpoint, a little bit more transparency with the numbers would have, would have been nice, so we didn't have to kind of do this stuff on our own and try to figure out what was being moved where. And then, I just think maybe, you know, coming here, you guys have one option. I don't know if, if that was really what you intended to do. I think a couple of options might have been nice, maybe a more, maybe there was more of a drastic option, and the, hey, this is really how you divide things up for long-term planning, and then a minimal option, but I just, I don't really understand this particular option. I feel like a lot of the other school districts, people came, they, they had their comments, and then everything was kind of adjusted back to the same, like, everybody else's boundaries were very similar to the original ones, except for this Hudson Prairie thing. You know, and Rivercrest didn't have the issue, EP Rock had the issue, they were overcapacity, Hudson Prairie needs to be better utilized, so why do we have, you know, over 100 kids being impacted at Rivercrest? Just to address that, so, that's it.
Okay. Yes.
Good evening. My name's Patrick Johnson, and I'm here on behalf of my wife, Katie. We have two kids, one of which attends Rivercrest Elementary School. I've reached out to the board, I appreciate those of you that have followed back up with me. I'm here to address option, or the Area 1 on the map. We currently reside up at Trillium Lane, which is east of 35 and south of N. This area was not really considered, I can back up and say, I was not part of the committee, but I attended pretty much every committee meeting that was there as an observer, and throughout the process, this area was not impacted until the very end. At that last committee meeting, it really struck a nerve with me, because there was no chance for the committee themselves to really address this area. They tried to, with the consultants, they asked for the amount of students that were affected by this change, because then themselves, they themselves were not aware that this big change is going to be put out there until the very end. That's why I believe the committee acted the way they did. Over 64% of them said, this is not right. We asked the board to reconsider this, with the numbers provided from the consultants. And I ask you guys to do that. This area, the committee addressed this area, and they narrowed it down, and I say this because I was there observing it, the area south of N, west of U, and east of Old 35, that smaller pocket right there, that they addressed, that they asked, that gets moved back to Rivercrest. When you look at the numbers provided to us tonight, these changes that we're asking really aren't going to affect the overall difference of schools. And what I mean by that is, when you look at the ideal capacity, Hudson Prairie in '22 to '23 will be at 96% to ideal. Rivercrest will be at 88%. The amount of students here... The amount of students here, if forty students are impacted by this, these figures will simply flip-flop, and students won't be affected. I asked for the board to consider this area. I believe that it makes geographic sense to move this area back to Rivercrest. When you look at the utilization of resources, one of the, one of the goals and part of the committee, students that are in this area will then have to travel across ninety-four on Highway Twelve to get to Prairie. The distance from my, my daughter will be approximately forty-eight percent longer, just as a crow flies. Doesn't impact the stoplights that they'll encounter, there'll be five of them. Now, they pick up in our neighborhood, they head west on Tower, they drop out to Rivercrest. There's minimal traffic, and you're not having to go in these heavily, heavily trafficked areas. Again, I'm here as a concerned parent. I appreciate your time, and I ask you to reconsider this area, follow through what the committee requested the board do. Over sixty-four percent of them asked for this to be moved back to Rivercrest, and please, you know, make that change. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments. I, I just wonder if this, would this be okay time to get that correct, that number from the consultant? All right, I just, just because if we have other people that are using different numbers, then we just have, if we had that number, I thought maybe it might. So, is, in that particular area?
For a point of clarification, Area One is sixty-five students.
Sixty-five?
Cottonwood Point is not in that.
I don't think, I don't, it's not the entire south of ninety-four, east of thirty-five. I believe the request from the committee was to, for the board to look at the numbers in this small area south of N and west of Twelve, is that right? And that-
That's U, west of U. All right. Well, if other, any other public comments? Yes.
Thank you for this opportunity. My name's Pete Bukovich. I currently have one student in Rivercrest and one to go to Rivercrest in two years. I am part of Cottonwood Ridge, so that would be the far right, it would be east up towards your, keep going right, right there. That is one bus, one bus service that's the whole area, thirty students, yet you're transporting them now up north, and they've been going back here. I want to point out to that neighborhood as well, in the last eleven years, if we make this change next year, this will be the third school that subdivision has attended. Before it was EP Rock, now it's Rivercrest, now we're going to Hudson Prairie. And then you want to do another event in five years, readjustment, or we got to go for fourth, go back to Rivercrest? It doesn't make sense. It's one bus, one bus. That's it. Thirty students. And I just want to remind you guys, the three most traumatic events for, for a little kid is a death of a family member, a divorce, and change in schools. It impacts them. Our subdivision Facebook page is constantly full of stuff saying, the kids are talking about this on the bus all the time, that they are going to a different school, losing all their friends. That's pretty traumatic for a one-year, a first grader. Thank you for your time.
Okay. Any other, I saw another hand. Go ahead.
I'm Andrea Wallace, and my kids are at Rivercrest, were in the Cottonwood Ridge neighborhood as well, so proposed to be moved to, or to Hudson Prairie. I'm going to try to, I wrote notes and get the things that people didn't mention yet, but I guess I wanted the board to really look carefully and make sure that there is confidence in the growth that is supposedly going to be happening, that's going to bring kids to Rivercrest. Like, somebody pointed out already, we have this twenty-five percent of the Rivercrest population that's being moved for the problem that was at EP Rock, and we were going to try to maybe, or the EP Rock was underutilized and that Hudson Prairie was overutilized. I would like the board to consider just dealing with that issue and then dealing with development or other types of issues as they come, rather than looking toward something where no one knows the future, we don't know what's going to happen, and I would really, as a parent of a kindergartner, hate to see us have to go through this again in a few years and have to move again, like Pete just said. I also have concerns about the number of students that are going to be shifted to Hudson Prairie next year. If it's, if I'm reading the maps right, it looks like that's about a hundred and fifty more students than what they have right now. That's a drastic increase. That's concerning for me as a parent. I think it's going to affect my children, I think it's going to affect the children that are at Hudson Prairie already, as well as the staff. The busing, I am concerned about busing. It's a really congested area around Hudson Prairie. Are they going to be able to accommodate however many more buses it takes to get that huge geographical area now across ninety-four and to Hudson Prairie? Is the school district and the busing company going to be able to do that in an organized and safe fashion? We had a lot of issues this year. That is something that's been on my mind. I think that's it, so, thank you.
Thank you. Saw a hand on the right side here.
I'll be quick. I'm also a parent in the Section One area, which is being impacted, and there's been quite a few voices here today about that, so.
I'm sorry, your name, sir?
Dean Flackey. Kids attend Rivercrest at this time, and we would just like to lobby that as much of the area east, southeast remain in Rivercrest, legitimately running over to that school, like, we talked about the safety issues of the traffic, and then more specifically, we talked about keeping neighborhoods together, and the lots that were affected on the last map that I saw showed lots fourteen and fifteen of Cottage Meadows attending up in Prairie, where now they attend Rivercrest, although where the neighborhood we're part of is, is all attending Rivercrest now. So, the Cottage Meadow neighborhood attends Rivercrest, but the map showed our two lots excluded from that neighborhood, so we'd like to have those added to our neighborhood, Cottage Meadows. So, it might be just a small thing that got overlooked, so, and I did call in and mention that to the staff, so they had the information. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Flackey. All right. Jeremy?
Hi, my name's Jeremy Cook. I just had a comment about, I don't know if we have the map before the last committee meeting, but before the last committee meeting, our neighborhood, Crosby Lane, which, and the area that also included Garrity Lane and Country View, were zoned to be in Prairie, to which it's closer than EP Rock. We live two miles on paved roads from Prairie, and it's further to, to EP Rock. One of the goals that the committee set was increasing utilization at Hudson Prairie while decreasing utilization at EP Rock. The same committee meeting, the area that's been so contentious, Number One, was also moved back into Prairie at the same time our neighborhoods, Garrity Lane, Crosby Lane, and Country View, were moved out of Prairie and into EP Rock. I totally agree with those who have commented on Area One. Speaking as a parent whose family has actually been divided by boundary exceptions, it is not a fun process, and I certainly wouldn't want these families to be affected. So, one resolution I see is moving the area bounded by Carmichael from ninety-four up to U ending at Crosby, back into Prairie, which would increase utilization, and then moving Area One back into Rivercrest, which would offload some of the pressure on Prairie and kind of divide it more evenly with Rivercrest. Thank you to the board for considering that commentary.
Thank you for your comments. I saw a couple other hands. Anyone else? All right.
Hi, I'm Julie, and my child attends Rivercrest, and I have one in middle school, so I know what that Prairie area is like in the morning. It's so hard to drop a kid off and even get down Carmichael to get on ninety-four to work. It's awful. And I'd like to say, for busing purposes, it was awful this year, and then they changed my kid's bus again, and he's closer to Gilbert Road to the old Thirty-Five, and he's riding with kids off of N, and all the kids by him are riding a different bus. So, I just don't see how you guys are going to get the busing situation where these kids aren't riding for more than an hour over to Prairie in that Area One. I think we should just keep it on the ninety-four like it was before, that side, we're all a community. My children are friends with kids down by N, kids, you know, over here by Rivercrest. I just think it would be too much for these kids to handle, plus, these children are talking about, you know, the disappointment of having to move on, you know, on the bus with their friends, of not going to school with them and stuff, breaking it up, so I just hope you keep it the way it is, there's no reason to move these kids. Thank you.
Okay, any other comments? Again, comments can be questions, if anybody has any, otherwise, we'll be wrapping up the public comment section and then turn it over for initial board discussion. No action's going to be taken tonight. This will be considered and then voted on January fourteenth, so. Folks have asked for every opportunity to have input. We've had it online for the last, what, two to three weeks, early December, I guess, we're now December seventeenth, so probably some of the folks here have entered some online comments, but this is another opportunity. I just want to make sure no one is left out, no one is claiming that they didn't get an opportunity to speak, so. Just open it up one last time. All right. Thank you for your comments and for your input. At this time, then, I would turn it back. Any of the comments or questions raised during those comments that either the administration or RSP want to address before we have board members ask questions?
Well, I guess, a clarifying question, and I think, like many of the board members, I had a chance to sit in on all of the committee meetings and listen to what happened, but at the end of that last committee meeting, what I thought I heard was consensus on the map that was presented with those five changes that were detailed, and then a request, if it was possible, to look at that section and what the numbers would mean, which is different, so just to clarify, which is different, because I think I heard some comments from people saying the committee asked the board to move that area, and I think what we heard was the committee endorsed that plan with the five changes and said, but since we don't have the numbers tonight, we'd like the board to look at those numbers. So, I'm looking, is that, is that how those of you who were at that meeting, and especially the two of you-
Yeah, Rob and Craig, you were the ones putting the questions up there.
Can you help get us all on the same plane there, so we're all starting at the same place regarding the committee's recommendation?
Exactly. It was, as you see the map behind me, and then more discussion from the board on whether or not areas on the east side, south of ninety-four, how much or any of that could be moved back to Rivercrest.
And, and what I heard at that meeting was that when you asked the question on this map on the right, it got seventy-four percent or seven, it was over seventy percent, can't remember the exact, was it seventy-four?
I believe it was about seventy-four, and I think the other committee members came and said if there was a definitive way in which more of this area on the east side could remain at Rivercrest, that number would have been higher.
So, of that approximately one quarter that wasn't most happy with this, it was because there was a lack of certainty with regard to Area One?
I think there was that, and then there was some members that ideally wanted to have more students at North Hudson and Willow River.
Okay. All right, well, then I turn over to board members. We haven't had an actual recommendation until tonight, and, but board members have received contact from individual constituents, and many of us have attended the meetings, as Heather pointed out, we heard different comments.
Well, just a couple, a couple point of clarifications, so we can kind of be on the same page. So, the boundaries were not drawn in order to up Prairie's amount of kids or to reduce, you know, Willows or things along those lines. The, the biggest concern that we have is on the southwest side of the district, according to our consultants, who have been working with developers and with municipalities, is that has our largest rate of growth and our largest chance for growth, and we know that there are several rather large developments that have already been annexed into the city, the one being south of Mayor Road, and then also we have apartment complex that originally was going to be, we thought condos associated with the corporate condos associated with the dog track development, but that was turned in also to apartment buildings, and then also the area south of Rivercrest here known as the Red Brick Property. I think everybody remembers the Red Brick Property as we looked at it for high school at one point, and that there was the potential there in the very, very near future that that was also going to come online with several hundred houses as well, very shortly. So, one of the things that happens with Rivercrest is, yes, Rivercrest was designed to be added on to. The board can add on to buildings to work their way out of these types of problems instead of moving boundaries. It's just that as we sit right now, we have seating or capacity in our elementaries for about twenty-nine hundred kids, and we have about twenty-two hundred elementary kids. It's very difficult for us to pass a bond referendum to add elementary space when we already are sitting on quite a bit of elementary space. And so, that's why the ability to not do anything with Rivercrest could become problematic for us. The other piece is, it, this process, if you remember, this process started way back in February, so almost a year ago, and will not actually be implemented till September of next year, or, yeah, of next year. So, we don't, we're not very agile as a school district. We can't all of a sudden see tremendous amounts of houses go up and make a change in six months, you know, so as we're looking at this, we're trying to project out into the future where we think, based on the projections that our consultants have given us, one of the things that has come up time and time again on the meetings is the Hudson Prairie boundaries, especially out on the, let me see here if I, east side here, there's a lot of empty land. The biggest challenge that we have is there's no utilities out there as far as sewer and water. The town of Hudson has the two-and-a-half acre lot restrictions, it's actually two acre with the average lot size of being two and a half, and from what I understand, Rob, Craig, correct me if I'm wrong, through your conversations with both developers and the municipalities, the likelihood of that being developed in any real significance anywhere out in kind of basically the pink areas anytime soon is slim. That would have a real big impact on enrollment.
Correct.
Okay. So, our, so one of our, our big challenges are, though, however, in talking with municipalities, the likelihood of more annexation to the south, which would mean more city-type lots, which would mean denser residential, which would mean more kids, is kind of the direction that you're hearing them talk about, or?
That is correct. It's, it's all about the cost of the infrastructure needed for that type of density.
And so, the, the thing is, is as we, as we pull kids out, right now, the buildings may look somewhat unbalanced, but it's designed so that Rivercrest can grow into its new housing developments over the next five to ten years, and right now, these projections are just out four years from right now, is that correct, Rob?
That's, that's correct.
So, you know, our, our goal was not to be back here in five years redoing this, was to try to get about ten years out of this. So, we would assume that, and again, I guess I would ask you guys, that if, if there was a way to take these out further, we would see Rivercrest's enrollment continue to increase, not increase, or what do you, what do you think, Rob?
I would say it'd be safe to make the assumption that with where the growth patterns are, that Rivercrest's enrollment would be larger than what you see in these projections as we get out in that five-to-ten-year window.
And so, I think, you know, that's, that's kind of the, you know, the big, the big challenge we're in right now, but now when we talk about Hudson Prairie, when we start talking about even that five-to-ten- But now, when we talk about Hudson Prairie, when we start talking about even that five-to-ten window, uh, at least from what you understand, probably insignificant growth out there, or what, what are you seeing?
What we've heard from the townships is there's going to be similar development patterns that we've seen with the larger lots. But, when you zoom into the parcels, you can see there's, there's fewer opportunities in which that actually will happen. And so, that goes back to that growth map. We tried to target where, um, we were hearing there was the potential for those type of developments.
I just, I just wanted to clarify some of those things, because I know sometimes it looks as though we can keep a boundary intact and still have plenty of room, which more than likely we would for the very near term, but could push us to either A, having to add onto Rivercrest, B, bring in multiple, you know, mobile classrooms, or C, having to re-boundary sometime between now and, you know, the next five to ten years. And so, that's some of the rationale, just to kinda give the board some, some background on, on some of these, 'cause we have not talked about this at, you know, at the board level. So, I just wanna make sure we had some clarification there, and it's, um, I, I understand where everybody is coming from on this, and, and as Rob said, I, I don't believe there is a perfect solution or a solution that will necessarily not upset somebody. I mean, it's, it's, there, there's going to be some challenges associated with it. Um, but I guess I'd turn it back over to the board for questions that you have, either for the administration or Rob.
And if I can piggyback, we've been talking about the new developments, but there's more existing housing inventory in your community. So, the other thing that's factored in to what we're seeing in, in some of the older established areas is what type of turnover, or what type of subdivision lifecycle, or what that yield rate will look like over this projection time period. So, if you think about where you live, you've seen people put their house up for sale, they move out. Are they gonna have a new family that moves in that has kids? Will they be elementary, middle school, high school? Um, with, with our analysis, we've tried to factor in that that type of lifecycle is occurring in your existing developments. So, that way, um, you have, again, the right space, um, in these buildings for the enrollment that's forecasted.
So, Nick, I have a, a question for the administrative team. I think, um, early in the sessions, you presented some of your, um, success. I mean, data that gives us great confidence that you know what you're doing when you're looking at this. I'm not as familiar with yield rates and things like that, but you showed some data about past projects you did. That gives us pretty darn high confidence that your projections are, are good. I think some questions really raised related to that, but other questions were raised, Nick, related more like to the logistics of implementation. Um, so, there were concern, two, two themes I heard. One was concerns around a large influx of students into a school and how the district would handle that. And then the other was around busing and the logistics. And so, how, you know, if we were to approve this, how then does the district go about doing the, the planning, um, for the logistics to make sure that that transition on the district operation side is as smooth as possible?
Mm-hmm. No, absolutely. So, uh, there are a lot of logistics to this, and that's part of the reason why getting this done early, because it allows us as a district to, to, there's, make some changes and adjustments. Uh, a couple things that, that happened. So, the elementary boundary decision, if the board chooses to make it January fourteenth, then all of a sudden it starts some things in motion. Uh, we'd be sending out a communication to families on the fifteenth, um, letting them know what the, the new board-approved boundaries are. Um, also, we would be reminding people of the boundary exception process that the board, uh, approved through board policy, uh, back in August and September. Uh, that would be right at that same time. Um, and a couple things we would highlight is, any current fourth graders going into fifth grade would automatically be grandfathered in to get to stay in their building for that year. Now, uh, you know, according to the policy, that doesn't guarantee their siblings. That just guarantees the fourth grader going into fifth, uh, as we work through that. Uh, and then what happens is, um, we start to look at, uh, family visitations in the buildings and start working through some of those components. Uh, we also then have to start looking at the certified staff reassignment process, uh, because as many people alluded to tonight and you brought up, you know, you have some buildings that are dropping in enrollment, some buildings that are going up in enrollment, and so that causes us to shift staff into different, uh, different buildings. Uh, and so, we'd be working with, you know, early January HR department, uh, as we do every year, be sur, uh, surveying all staff, uh, as to, um, next year, what is their kinda first, second, and third choice? Is that how it goes, Andrea? As far as, um, where they would like to be the following year? Uh, and so, all staff would give that option, so that we then take that in consideration as we look at staffing the buildings. Um, we also would look at the reassignment of support staff as well, depending on, uh, how those, how those components go. Plan would be communicated out to building principals and to parents. Um, and then, we would also need to make some decisions pretty early on, location of summer school and some of those, uh, some of those components. But, really, we'd start looking at family transition activities as early as, uh, you know, March and April, uh, for families to be able to, uh, get into, um, get into new buildings, families that are impacted by it, to be able to get to, to meet, uh, folks in the new buildings. And part of the reason some of the people may say, "Why don't you start those in February?" 'Cause what we'd like to do is get the majority of the staffing done, so that, um, if you're a new student that's going from, let's say, Rivercrest to Hudson Prairie, um, you would get to then meet your teacher that you're going to have, and, and you start to, you know, build that connection that way. Uh, we start to work through that. And then, you know, our transportation plan and review and practice, and we're, believe me, there's, there's nobody more well aware of the challenges that, uh, we've had related to transportation in the district. And, uh, we will, uh, continue to strive to do better, um, and we have, uh, hired new individuals related to transportation in order to do that. So, we'll start down that process as to what transportation looks like. Um, and then, in the summer, then we start down the process of, of actually moving classrooms and teacher materials and things along those lines. So, um, there's, there's a lot of different, a lot of different moving pieces, uh, a lot of different logistics that go with it. Uh, keeping families abreast of it the whole way, keeping staff abreast of it the whole way. Um, but that's part of the, the necessity to try to get this done in January, so that gives us plenty of time for us to do our transition on our end, but then also the transitioning for parents. Some people may ask about the boundary exception process. Um, so, as we talked about in the board work session, as it relates to open enrollment, the way that the process will work, I think, uh, the boundary will be asking pretty early in January, after the board determines the boundaries, what, uh, what interest people have in staying at their current elementaries for their fourth grader going into fifth grade, their child that's in fourth grade going to fifth grade. So, we want that information, you know, probably by the end of January, first part of February. And the reason we need that right away is 'cause we have to determine how does that impact staffing? Because we, the board has said that you're gonna guarantee every fourth grader that wants to stay in their building going into fifth grade, that may cause us to have to add another section of staff to fifth grade in a certain building. And if we do that, we just need to know, planning-wise, who that's going to be and how that's going to work. Uh, then the other boundary exceptions, essentially what happens is, uh, people would apply throughout the spring, uh, and then the process. Do we have a final date on that, Andrea, of when the determination is made?
No, not yet. I, we're gonna look at that.
It'll probably be looking at the end of May?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, so the determination of whether or not people's boundary exceptions would be, uh, approved would be the end of May. That's prior to us approving any open enrollment in from students outside the district. So, we wanna give our, our kids, uh, that are resident kids in, in the district first, first shot at boundary exceptions. Um, and then we'll move through the process that way. So, that's kinda the timeline as we, as we work through the different components.
Mr. President?
Yes, Sue.
It's kinda long. Um, I just have reflective comment. I, I have to say that since the last meeting, uh, hearing from the public and citizens and then reading all the comments and so on, uh, my greatest high anxiety area, maybe that's why I had a cold sore last week, I don't know. But, my greatest anxiety area was that whole discussion that came up again tonight about the area by N and thirty, old thirty-five and so on, and, you know, wanting to stay at Rivercrest and so on. So, that's my, you know, that, that's there. Um, the flip side of it is that I have a tremendous respect for the people that came here and did all the committee work. And I think I missed one meeting, but I was here to observe people work. And I think the first night that they were sitting at the tables with the maps and talking about drawing on the maps and saying, "This is what a, a neigh, what our neighborhoods are," um, to me, it was kinda like everyone's wrestling an alligator. And then, at the last meeting that we had, when there was consensus given, uh, for this most recent map, um, it was like, I don't know, they were wrestling a puppy or something. It seemed like, and I'm gonna use this expression, 'cause it's part of my own, uh, working career, of trusting the process. And each time there was a meeting, it was like there was a layer of foundation that we worked from, and then another layer and another layer. And, but on the other hand, I want you to know that I'm listening to the comments about what you feel like was a little switcher or something with that piece of property, or not the property, but the area by N and thirty-five. So, I'm weighing all that, but I want to emphasize my respect for the work that the committee has done to bring us to really an amazing point. Um, and I guess I'll just leave it at that.
Bob?
Yes, I just had a question, uh, about the Rivercrest, um, growth. Did you take into consideration your numbers, uh, the attitudes of, uh, the city and their annexation process? I know that you hear this, you hear Mayor O'Connor speak often about they need to grow south. It's the only place they can outgrow. And he also talks, uh, regularly about higher density housing, calling, uh, the golf course property actually, uh, revenue-neutral, that it's not necessarily good for a city to have, you know, single-family lots. They want more apartments, condos, townhouses, higher density. Um, so, when people say, "I want, you know, we should have even schools all around," and you look, if, if we're not growing into the township of Hudson, and we're not growing up into Saint, Saint Joe's with higher density housing, that's, to me, that says that's why we need more to cut down on Rivercrest a little bit for the future, to make that last longer before Red Brick Road and some of these other properties really get built up. So, I'm asking, did that, is, is the, the activity of the city weighing in on your, on your projections at all?
Absolutely. Where, where we see the growth is going to be indicated by where these annexations occur, who owns the property, how they've been talking to the city. So, the latest information at the time we did the study was interjected in, um, to be able to indicate this is where the growth is gonna be within the city of Hudson. We didn't hear any conversation. We heard desire. They would like to go east to the land that's owned by the district, and they'd go even further east. But, right now, the costs to, to extend the infrastructure is, is greater than what they can do on the south side. Um, the other thing that's factored in is we know, um, particularly with the millennial generation, the type of housing that they're most interested in, as the data's coming forward, is different than what Gen X or the baby boomers have chosen with, let's say, some of the large lots, um, or the traditional suburban lots. Um, a lot of them are looking for, uh, more affordable options, and those affordable options tend to be more of the multifamily developments. And that starts hinging back to, you know, if we're attracting college-aged millennials, they tend to have, um, a greater debt than what other generations have had, and so their affordability of buying cars and houses is a little bit different. So, again, a lot of these demographic patterns and information is trying to be infused into what does this look like for your enrollment?
One more question. Um, we hear a lot of talk about the importance of keeping neighborhoods together. Um, in the last boundary change, Red Cedar Canyon, uh, went to E.P. Rock, and it left, I believe, Heritage Greens, um, in Rivercrest. It, it always looked to me like the natural boundary was in ninety-four and thirty-five and Hanley, that, that would, that Heritage Green maybe should've gone to Rivercre, or, uh, E.P. Rock before. Was that in, was that originally going to E.P. Rock in one of the earlier plans?
It, again, going back to the journey, how things started to evolve, that the area I'll turn around, I think, that you're talking about is this area here?
Correct.
Um, we did have a plan, I believe, that had them going to E.P. Rock. Um, some of the stuff was what we do on the, the west side versus the east side. And then, as the committee kinda analyzed that, as we worked through the, the public inputs, what you see here is kinda that body of work where they landed on a comfort level of which school this area goes to.
I'm not, uh, expecting exact numbers, but do you have any idea that pocket of green, that Heritage, Heritage Green area? How many students are in that area?
I, I'd have to go back, just to not throw a, a random number out.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes?
Uh, a question for the consultants. We have, uh, been tasked by the community committee to, uh, reassess possibly what areas, if any, of, of Area One could potentially remain at Rivercrest. Uh, what are the numbers in each of the neighborhoods that exist in Area One?
All right, basically, what we did is we took, I'm just gonna kinda point up there for everyone to see. We basically generally came, um, this is roughly would be the east-west boundary, so we kept that Cottonwood area at Hudson Prairie.
I'm sorry, I don't, I don't mean to, well, I guess I am interrupting you. I do mean to do that. Uh, apologize. Rather than drawing a straight line, is that what is a contiguous neighbor, neighborhood?
I'm just giving a general, because we had number one up there, so I'm just saying it's, it's generally contained by this. So, if you take Cottonwood Point or Cottonwood Area, that still stays at Hudson Prairie. Everything else that would be between, um, Old Thirty-five and roughly U, I think it is, um, is it, there's about sixty-five K-five students.
Not, not including Cottonwood?
What's that?
Not including Cottonwood?
Not including.
I have the numbers here. It's eight kindergartners, thirteen first graders, ten second graders, ten third graders, nine fourth graders, and fifteen fifth graders.
Where do we access those numbers?
Uh, I can send them to you. I had them, I had the, I had them send that to me.
Oh, so you have those numbers and just, we haven't seen those?
Yeah, because one of the things that, one of the things that the, the committee asked was, would the board look at, can the board look at those different numbers? So, one of the things I asked for from, uh, RSP is, can you give us, you know, Area A? So, the other drawing that was up there, the Area B and Area C, um, how many kids does it impact, each of those areas? And then also, that Area One, how many kids does that impact? So that, as we look at it from a staffing level, so if the board says to the administration, uh, "Is it a wash?", we can say, "Well, this is how many sections it would take in order to move that back to Rivercrest. This is how many sections it takes to leave it at Hudson Prairie."
So, how many is Cottonwood?
Cottonwood's not-
And that, that was not part of our analysis to see what we were looking at. Um, where the committee left it was basically U is the east-west boundary, so Cottonwood was staying at Hudson Prairie. The area that we're looking at is those rural subdivisions directly east of Old Thirty-five.
So, basically this-
Ninety-four or N? But Carrie, the parent who spoke, said there are thirty kids on the bus, so I would assume it's in that ballpark?
So, it's there right here. Give or take.
So, south of N or south of ninety-four?
Was it south of N or south ninety-four? Do you remember, Rob?
Um, I think it went all the way to ninety-four.
All the way to ninety-four. And again, that was some feedback that the committee got was, uh, is, originally, it was, is N a natural boundary? And I think we had even some committee members that said, "Hey, N's not a natural boundary, because these kids go, the neighborhoods go cross that." And so, um, that's when, that's when that started to get looked at, so that N was no longer a natural boundary. Do you remember that, Heather?
And, yeah, and I think the feedback that we heard multiple times from parents in that neighborhood was, "We'd rather stay at Rivercrest, but whatever you do, keep us together." I mean, so it was a strong preference for "Keep us together wherever we land."
Yep.
Do you mind going back one slide to Committee Five page? All right, so this is, this would've been the map then that the whole committee looked at, um, after, it'd be October, correct?
Correct. So, this is the public input, then meeting number five, same map.
And so, following that, um, committee meeting number, uh, four, would it be? And then, the public input, areas A, B, and C were developed as ones that could possibly be switched, and then votes were made whether to keep or stay. And then, A was voted to stay with Hudson Prairie, correct?
Correct.
And then, B- And then B, that's where my question is, because I happen to live in that area, and I've lived there for 18 years, and my kids went to Hudson Prairie. And then 10 years ago or so, when it was last changed, they changed it to EP Rock. And then I saw the initial recommendation was to switch it back to Hudson Prairie, which worked really well for our, our kids, because Hudson Prairie is a lot closer. But then the committee voted to move it back, and I wasn't really clear why the box B looks like a rectangle. Why include Crosby Lane? I mean, why not just cut it off where the blue is? You see where the blue comes down and shorten Area B that goes, maybe stays with EP Rock? But, you know, this balancing, I've just, what was the thought process between making B more of a rectangle than a square, if you will?
I don't know if there's any like precise methodology of why it became the rectangle other than when you look, how it matches up as we come south, it kind of became kind of a line that appeared based on where we had planning areas, that you could just make this cut and get a X number of students that potentially would be there. You could have easily had it come further to the west where it's on the west side of the district-owned property. So it just kind of grouped a, a larger segment together. And really for reference, if you go back to that committee meeting, where, where they ended up going on almost all of their decisions, there was kind of some uniformity, is if the students could still be in the building, they ended up saying, let's keep them in that building. So if we look at the Holton area with, with North Hudson, it was like, hey, put them back at Holton, because they understood the 85% of the maximum capacity, and they're just slightly over the ideal capacity, keep them there. We look at the area that was going from North Hudson to Willow River, the same situation. We looked at Area A, it's at Hudson Prairie, there was conversation about moving them to Willow, because that gets into, one of the comments made tonight was the disparity in what capacity is in your buildings. And so that gets into where the buildings are, where the kids are, and then with the committee, where they felt ultimately try to make the least amount of change that would still adhere to your guiding principles and your prioritized boundary criteria. So if we go into the Rivercrest, knowing that all of that development was happening, I think their feeling was, if you keep them lower, we won't have to change those boundaries, and that'll meet your duration of boundaries. Looking at Hudson Prairie with, with the limited development opportunities, if we get them closer to that ideal capacity, we have a boundary that should be sufficient. So I think there, there was some commonality on how they went through this, and I think that's why they shifted with the conversation that happened with this Area 1, was could it stay at Rivercrest? Thus the conversation, information that we've sent to Nick to get into, how does this look if you did put them there for what it means for your staffing and whatnot? Because the caveat that the committee had was, was more along the lines of the fiscal responsibilities that the district has. Is this going to cause greater costs than if we keep it as we know it?
All right, and you can go ahead and put it back on the recommendation one, so that I don't want to confuse people. I just want to show that there was discussion, there's a process there, and the committee, which is the segue to my comment, I, I wanted to make sure we were all on record, you know, thanking the committee for their work. I mean, this was a large group of people that volunteered many hours of their time. I don't know if I can say that they all had a lot of fun in the process, or that this process is so much fun that we want to do it every couple of years. But I, I know that it's hard work, and the suggestion that they didn't look at a map or that they didn't use common sense, I don't think is fair. I think that the board did use a lot of common sense, there was a lot of good discussion. And yes, we don't have 100% vote all the way down the line, but we knew that we weren't going to have that. And I just want to remind everyone, you know, the board had criteria, and we thought about this, and we listened to the recommendations, and used our experiences as well, and ultimately decided by a large margin that duration of boundaries was our primary goal. Those that think that our primary goal was to minimize as few students as possible, that would not be accurate. Because many times, those two criteria are diametrically opposed. I mean, if, if we want to affect as few kids as possible, then we'll just leave the boundaries where they are. We wouldn't change them. So we're going to impact, and I don't want to minimize the impact on students, I personally know that impact. My son attended three schools in four years in this district, okay? So I know what that can be. And I personally attended different schools, not just at the beginning of the year, but in the middle of the year, changed in grades three and eight. Not necessarily fun grades to change in the middle of the year, I know that it can be traumatic. So believe me, it doesn't escape the people on the board, we have personal experiences we bring to this. So we're trying to balance all of this, and that's why on some of these recommendations for these northern schools, Holton and North Hudson, could we have changed building utilization a little bit? Yes. But ultimately, did we really need to in order to stay within the ideal, and we didn't? So I just wanted to make sure that those comments were made and that everyone understands. That's what we're trying to do here. Finally, I'm hopeful that between now and January 14th, we'll get input from the administration on, this is the recommendation of the committee, and I, and I respect that very much. I mean, my personal preference is not to do a whole bunch of substantial changes to what the committee worked on over the course of five months. But some things that might make quote-unquote that common sense, if we look at Area 1 there, just where the number one is, and then you got that little sliver that was switched back to Rivercrest, right in there? You see there's that one road that ends in a cul-de-sac? We've got the end of the cul-de-sac in Rivercrest, and we got the whole rest of the road going to Hudson Prairie. I would hope that we would change that, so we don't have two buses going down the same road. One that takes the kids at the end of the cul-de-sac to Rivercrest, and the other that takes them to Hudson Prairie. And you could probably, there's another road I see that ends in a cul-de-sac, same thing, it switches over the other way. The end of the cul-de-sac is in the, the pink, and the rest of the road is in green. So assuming we would do some slight tweaks to that, that might affect one or two students, but still, which isn't going to be big changes to building utilization, but try to keep neighborhoods intact, which obviously is also one of our higher goals. Nobody wants to split up neighborhoods and cause a headache. But none of our three, our top three criteria is necessarily, you know, overall costs. But, I mean, you can't help but look at some of the decisions, you know they're going to impact busing. The kids on the east side of the district, they got to be bused somewhere. It's, do we want, can we minimize the impact of that and still respect all these others? And that's what we're going to have to decide between now and January 14, I guess. Do we have other comments of other board members then?
Mr. President?
Yes.
I guess I, I'm going to just say this, because I keep hearing the word busing. That has not been part of any of the criteria that we've had to deal with. It's something that will be taken care of once we get our decision-making done. And I, I don't think that our community members or those of us on the board have to worry about that right now. And I know there were some problems in the fall, and trust me, the board has been working very closely with administration, and we've all, administration's been incredible in trying to solve the problems, even though I know when you step out there to the bus, it doesn't look like we're solving any problems. But I really think busing is like a fallout thing, and it, it will, it will get solved. But that, tonight, I think we're talking about even more important priorities.
James, I just would like to echo your comment, just to ensure we do have some of those numbers, I would like to see that as well, especially for Area 1 and the impact there, just so that we could, you know, get some of that feedback, make sure we have that data. Also, just out of curiosity for Prairie, knowing that we're seeing a large influx, and we've had some big class sizes go through there in the past, do we know what our maximum total enrollment of students has been for that elementary school?
What's the largest we've ever had at Prairie?
When you look at the total, because we did also take a number of sections out of Prairie to have the middle school in there, and then when we had it on, we put those back, right? So I'm just curious what that total number, the largest number has been in the past at Prairie?
Well, I mean, you know, Prairie's ideal capacity is 529. So Prairie was built as a four-section building. And similar to Rivercrest, has been built as a, as a four-section building, so, and so was EP Rock. So max capacity's 588, but we say ideal capacity is 529, so that we can ebb and flow as neighborhoods turn over at different rates at different times. You know, what is the largest number of kids we've ever had in a building? I don't have that number off the top of my head, I mean, we can get that for you and have it for you at the next meeting, but I'm not sure if we've ever had four sections in there or not, if it's back prior to Rivercrest opening, if that's when we're running four sections. Dave's nodding his head, he has more institutional knowledge than I do. So it was a four-section building prior to Rivercrest opening, and EP Rock was also even larger than it is now, so obviously Rivercrest took the pressure off of both of those buildings.
Thank you.
Thanks for asking that, Bruce, because I think that would be good to know if we're looking at a historic number of kids and buses and vehicles at that location, or if in fact, we've in the past successfully managed that number of kids and vehicles and buses. Because if the answer is we've been in that realm, then that's one less thing to worry about.
So, so a couple of things to take into consideration as a point of clarity. So leaving the middle school, getting onto Interstate 94, when dropping off for the middle school in the morning is a headache, there's no doubt about it. We're taking essentially 1,300 kids to the middle school site. But that's at a different time than when Prairie drops off and picks up. I've experienced it firsthand, it's shocking how few cars actually go to Prairie, we do have a lot of kids that ride the bus. At the middle school times, there's no doubt about it, Carmichael's a mess, I would caution everybody to stay away from it at the time middle school is, is dropping off and picking up. I would tell you that that is not the same situation when the elementary is dropping off and picking up, because even at that point, we're really only talking at most about 500 kids being added at that time. A lot of those kids, we have a lot of kids that are coming in on buses, we have a large number of kids that are already there because their parents have dropped them off because of school age care. So we're very confident that the congestion at Prairie is more than able to be managed in the buses, especially with the new drive lanes and everything else we have. Like I said, middle school, it's a little different story, it, it can be a real headache, but it's still way better than it was two years ago before we had redesigned the parking lot.
Yes, Bob?
Has there been any talk, part of your predictions or planning from the Carmichael-Vine intersection, any talk of the city or whatever, widening lanes, adding lanes? Is that part of this too? Because we've all been waiting for that, those street repairs to be done. I think everybody in the area knows that's coming.
So, you know, there's, there's lots of different developments that happened. So as Rob talked about with the different municipalities, we're obviously staying in contact with the city of Hudson. We have the property that's on the southwest corner, Vine and Carmichael, I think people refer to it as the Atwood property. I think you've seen the house has moved off there, that's a property that's going to be a single-family dense residential, and then also some commercial along Vine, or I'm sorry, along Carmichael. We also have, you know, the remainder of the golf course development, that if you remember, the golf course development was going to take years and years and years to build out, and it's about built out. The process of repairing or changing that intersection, part of I think what has delayed the development on the corner of Carmichael and Vine, is that exact point, who's going to pay for the upgrades to Carmichael and Vine? As they infuse a lot more houses, a lot more, you know, folks in there? And I think, from what I understand, they have some type of conceptual plan that's made through part of the works, and, and we would anticipate seeing progress on the subdivisions in that area starting as soon as the spring, as we've kind of been following it with the city.
All right. One of the, of the second highest factor was the enrollment projections and building utilization. And so as I'm seeing it, you guys are projecting that in those four years, basically, these are all kids that have already been born, right? I mean, that are going to be attending kindergarten?
Correct, they're born, but they may not yet live here.
Okay. And so you're looking at where the housing developments are and turnover and so, so forth? So with the changes, as recommended by the committee, we'd see drops in a couple of the schools and a big increase at Hudson Prairie. But for instance, during those four years, then Hudson Prairie virtually doesn't change, Willow River doesn't change, North Hudson doesn't change, and Holton goes up, but it still stays under max capacity. It's the EP Rock that grows by about 33, and Rivercrest that grows by 50, correct?
Correct.
So if we were to put back in another 65 students at Rivercrest, we're going to be over the ideal capacity at Rivercrest.
Correct.
Mr. President?
Yes?
Echoing several other members, I too am very appreciative of the committee's work, and I understand it went through several iterations with the final vote that they had made on Areas A, B, and C, and then the tweaks to Holton and North Hudson. To your point earlier, when you said Area B was a rectangle rather than a square, I don't know how that rectangle got suggested. I don't know if that was strictly the consultants, or if that was the committee that had suggested that. But certainly Carmichael seems like a reasonable division, and would then alleviate some of EP Rock's projected growth. But again, I don't know exactly how all of those iterations came about, because from what little I could tell, it seemed that the committee was at times equally surprised.
Yes, Bruce?
Just so I understand, the, the number that you were using, right, at Rivercrest, you said the, by 22, 23?
Right.
At the 466 plus another 65?
Yeah.
That it would be over by, by two though, right? I mean, it's not like it would be significantly over, it would be about at the, at the ideal capacity?
Right.
And these are all projected, you know, it could grow more than that? It could grow less than that, right? I mean, those are our projections at, at, at best, and I know we do our, our best to do, what, what a crystal ball might tell us. But, you know, I, I don't know that it's necessarily an overwhelming number either, if that was something to be looked at. Has there been a map done with any of those suggested changes at all, or is it just numbers at this point in time in conversation?
Has there been a what's that? I'm sorry, Bruce.
With any of the discussions that took place kind of at the end of the last committee meeting?
So really what we did is we asked, we asked the RSP to give us the numbers of the impacted areas, so we could run some different scenarios as far as staffing goes. You're absolutely right, I mean, we can move those 65 kids back into Rivercrest, and probably over the course of the next four years, we butt up against that max capacity, but we may be starting this discussion again four years from now, because six years from now, you're going to be well over that max capacity, and you're going to need to move kids. So, or we could head into a massive recession, recession and not have any growth, I mean, you know?
It's tough to tell, I understand.
It's tough to tell. You know, the other piece, and I think Rob alluded to it, so one of the things they asked for from the district was 10 years of enrollment data that we gave them by address. And so they could load in, and what that does is it starts to give them, how quickly do neighborhoods turn over? You know, because right now in the Oled House, there's a second grader, but next year, there's not going to be a second grader in the Oled House. And, you know, six years from now, there won't be any elementary kids at the Oled House, but, you know, how often does that house see elementary kids turn over? And, and it's the same thing on all these different neighborhoods, and that's taken into consideration as they're kind of building, you know, the projections as they went through that. So we know that, you know, in So um, we know that, you know, in areas that we have more dense housing, they tend to turn over more than our areas out in the townships. And that's, that's kind of been, I think, everybody's experience to some extent. Um, I think somebody had said earlier to me, uh, I can't remember if it was in this meeting or I was talking to a young lady before the meeting. Hey, our cul-de-sac is impacted by this. We're the only family that has kids on our cul-de-sac. You know, and it's, they happen to be out in the, I think it was the town of Hudson. Maybe it was town of Troy, town of Hudson. And so, you know, I think that's, that's just, that's part of it. I mean, those are some of the challenges. Um, we know that our growth is going to be, the denser growth is going to give us more kids over and over again. You know, as we look through it, so. But as far as the numbers go, um, you know, what we can do is, you know, we'll put together staffing, plans associated with it and cost to staff, the different options. You know, one of the things that we talked about was that area B that Jamie talked about. Because uh, and I think Kerry just talked about a little bit is because up until the last committee meeting, area B was always going to be at um.
Hudson Prairie.
Hudson Prairie. And so when we said, okay, it's going to go to, now all of a sudden it's going to go back to Rock, the, the issue with that sometimes can be depending on what grade level of the kids that are involved in those moves can cause us to have to add sections. So you know, we started to look at that. And so for example, and I said this to Rob on the phone, I think on Friday, area B going to, back to Rock has us add another section in order to accommodate it. So those tw- it only impacts 25 kids, that area B. But the way that 25 kids fall at the different grades, we can handle them at Prairie without adding staff. If they're back at Rock, it means in one grade or another, we have to add another section in order to try to get the numbers to balance out. And so that's really been what we've been trying to get at uh, when asking about these individual sections. So Rob, you have something up there?
Yeah, and I, I brought up this. So the, the goal tonight was to give you where the committee recommendation is. So if there's some things we don't know, it's literally because we just came prepared. Here's where the committee recommendation is. Where do you as a board want to go? And I thought just bringing up this map where you could see that rectangle of EP Rock, it kind of makes some sense. Trying to do this looking behind me. You can kind of see that it kind of matched up with, with what we saw with the street coming in and the houses that would be on the south side of the district owned property. And then with the streets and subdivisions that are here to the west. This is where I was saying we could have easily dropped because of the way our planning areas are. Like where my hand is down this parcel line. Or we could have came over here. You can see some commonalities because when we look at those planning areas, we're looking at what are the number of units? How long have they been built? What have we seen historically with kids in any of these given areas? And so the conversation that we've had with Nick was really that this area one, so if I can move myself over, was if the, the committee left it, hey, can this work by moving this to Rivercrest? So the conversation that we had with administration was to give them information here in this area one on how, how can you move um, those kiddos, keep them back at Rivercrest? And so that's where that 65 students came up. And that's why he can talk about the EP Rock. If, if we kept them at Hudson versus going to EP Rock, we can now make a, a better staffing decision if that's a decision that the board and administration needs to make.
Yeah, and I think from, for my purpose at least, and I would maybe suspect for the other board members as well, we're not making a decision tonight, but to have the data and to be able to look at it and reflect on it, I think is going to be important. So just to have the information is more so, you know, not necessarily saying that that's what I would ultimately suggest we need to do. But I'd just like to see the data and have that information.
Data on what?
The, just the numbers that we've been, what we've been discussing here.
Do you have it, Rob?
You're talking about areas A, B, C, and one, correct?
Yeah, man, I, I mean, I can pull it up right now. We have it.
You're just saying to send it, that's all?
What's that?
Can you send it out to us?
Yeah, yeah, I can. I mean, I, yeah, I can. So I guess the question is, we can pull it up right now. I can send it out to you as well. I think what Rob's asking is what other, are there any other directions? Based on what you've heard from feedback from the community, based on the written feedback that you've gotten, based on everything else? Is there anything else you want us to? Prior to the January board meeting, is there anything that the board wants us to tweak, adjust, look at? Or is that what you're kind of getting at, Rob?
Yeah, and, and if I can add on to what Nick's saying is, so you could logically, um, there, there was one request of an area that's um, east of A. Let me pull this down.
Keep going up.
There we go.
Right there.
Okay, so, so this area to go to Hudson Prairie. Okay, so you heard that tonight. What, what direction we need to know is, is where are you wanting things to go? Because are, are we, are we just now going in a different tangent of where the committee is? Are you thinking that maybe area A should go to Willow River? Um, are you thinking all of area B coming back to Hudson Prairie? What direction do you want to give administration and, and RSP to? When you come back for your next meeting, you're going to say, hey, this is where I'm comfortable. And I'm looking at you, but I'm in.
I'll just make a quick comment. Someone made a comment on this earlier and I, I certainly appreciated it. It was, you know, maybe the committee recommendation, one or two other options so that we're looking at based upon what we're discussing. So that as a board, we could land to say, you know, this would be the final recommendation that we look to move forward with. So based upon some of those comments tonight, you know, maybe one of the options would be to move, you know, area one back to uh, Rivercrest. Um, another one could be, you know, I think about a few of them. I mean, a few of them that are discussed here tonight. Uh, I don't know if we could all land on something together as a group collectively that you could say, these are three options that we'd like to see. But I think instead of having just one option to look at, I don't know if we'll have as much alignment as if we, you know, could look at maybe two or three options that we could all collectively land on uh, on one final. Does that make sense?
Yes, and it would, it would obviously be a better informed decision if we, if we had the numbers for each of those areas. I, I, I don't think we could possibly make a decision without.
No, but they've already said they're going to send those out, right? So I mean, we'll get those.
Yeah, but I, I didn't, I didn't realize that those would be available, but just not available to us tonight.
Okay, well, nobody's keeping numbers from anybody. So first of all, but, but I mean, the committee's recommendation, the only, the only thing that was really in dispute heading into this meeting was that area one. Okay?
Yep.
And, and uh, we did have the numbers at the last boundary committee meeting for area B. And we had it for area C, and we had it for area A, and the consultants provided all those. And we looked at that. But it was that area one that was, hey, if there's something we can do to try to keep this at Rivercrest, let the board, let the board decide. But what we need to know in order to get you the numbers that you want, what, what do you want it, what do you want it to look like? Otherwise, we are just going to keep moving pieces around on the puzzle and redoing the process again. So if you say to us, we want to know what it looks like with area one in Rivercrest and area one without Rivercrest, you know, Prairie, fine, we can get those numbers. If you say you want to see what it looks like with that area up by McCutchen's at HB and staying at Willow, fine. And we can do the same thing with area B. But if there's anything else we need to know, so we can give you these scenarios, that's fine.
So, so I'll weigh in on that just really quick. For me, it's, it is area one, probably that's most, of most interest.
Okay, but how do you define area one? Because is that, are you using N as the north boundary or 94? And are you using uh, all the way to the district edge, the east edge as area one? Or are you ca- you know, calling it county U?
I don't know that I can answer that specifically. I think there was a, probably enough discussion in the committees to determine what that, that area is. Um, I mean, you guys have defined it to a certain set of a number, right? Take that number. That's area one. To me.
I, I would say we go with what I believe the committee was talking about. There was, I mean, there was conversation about boundaries at that fifth meeting. And I believe they landed on N and U. I mean, I think, I mean, I feel like they had that conversation. And we could maybe circle back and get affirmation from a few committee members about that. In, in, in my mind, I would be most comfortable with looking at that and that only. I mean, I think, you know, there's been already tonight, some concerns raised about, about changes that were made late in the game. So the map that came to committee meeting four, so only had committee meeting four and five to discuss. So I think if we now, not, I mean, I appreciate the person who's here from that neighborhood. But if because one person was here talking, a neighborhood flips that was never even discussed throughout the process, I think we're setting ourselves up for bad feedback. I think um, similarly, I mean, I think tonight, this was the first time I've heard from parents who said, please move my kid. I mean, there were two parents here who were advocating to move their kids out of their current school into a different school. I think the committee at, at the meeting, at Friday or at the, at the fifth meeting was very much looking and saying, okay, if we can without moving kids, make this work, meet the other standards, let's keep the kids where they are, which was, which is why they moved back to EP Rock, that neighborhood where you live, Jamie. That's, I mean, so I, I'm really, really hesitant to dig into areas that the committee did not ask us to dig into. There were five committee meetings, two public feedback meetings. I tend to lead toward thinking, go with the committee recommendation, which was this. And please take a look at, at that area, um, just east of Rivercrest to see if it can be accommodated. I'm nervous about opening other things this late in the process.
I would prob- I would probably comment on that, that the committee decided, the committee decided to forward one recommendation to the board. And in other processes that Rob and I have done, there may have been two or three. But that was a committee decision that we were comfortable in forwarding one process or one recommendation. And one of the things I would say to the board is your number one prioritized criteria is duration. And you, you have that right to go ahead and do whatever you're going to do prior to January 14th. But the more you move and you do some of those things, you're going to cut down on the duration of that. So I hear a lot of statements tonight, we want this to last five years, seven years, 10 years. But I've seen processes where those, that recommendation has changed a great deal and you will lose the, the duration of that. That'll suddenly become what was seven or eight years, might only become a couple of years. Also want to compliment, uh, compliment the district and Superintendent Olet. Um, I think you're well on your way for the transition and the communication to families and things like that. And just so the board knows, um, I'll be the contact to continue to talk with Nick regarding that. Um, but it sounds like you're well on the way with all the kinds of things that'll happen beginning in January of notifying parents and transition meetings and so forth. And so that's great that you've already started to think about that.
Do we want to vote on what you put forward as far as what we do? Or what, what are the other board members' thoughts?
I'll just concur with Heather that I, we asked for something to be done by a committee. They gave us a recommendation. The, there's been a lot of strong commentary about that little area of uh, Rivercrest, going back to Rivercrest. Um, and I think we can talk about that. But um, once you change one little variable, it changes all the other variables. I mean, I'm not even in math and I can tell you if you drop one ping pong ball on a table with some other ping pong balls, they're all going to start moving. And I think we have something in place that we want to consider.
Any other comments by board members on this? I guess where I look at this, again, I also give a lot of deference to the committee. I thought, I mean, made up of a lot of um, very intelligent and well-meaning people who took their job very seriously. I saw, you know, how much effort they put into it. And for us to make a whole lot of changes to what they did, I would be very hesitant, very, very hesitant to do that. That being said, with, you know, this one change Bruce is proposing, I still think it bears, when you say area one, and there was a lot of discussion about what that was, there, there really wasn't. I mean, the, the committee for just based on time, they didn't get down to this neighborhood stays and this neighborhood goes. I think generally, I think Heather's right that the consensus was N and U. But I don't know, that 65 students, is that all within south of N and west of U? Or does that include that 20 to 30 or whatever it is over in, is it Cottonwood? That's south of 94 and east of U?
If I could speak to that, I, I think generally more of the conversation was, do, is it N or 94? But coming up U, let me get my hand over here. And then up to N and then up like this to 94 and over so that we capture Baker Road? So I think that's generally, and I have to go back and see what our analyst did. But I think that generally is what we classified as one. Knowing that um, if we went everything south of 94 to get that Cottonwood area, we knew for sure it was going to be over the, the ideal capacity and close to the max capacity. So that's kind of how that got cut down, along with the conversations that we had that on both sides of, of N for Cottonwood, we're seeing themselves as kind of one general area, even though it was a major road that broke it. So that, that, so if that gives you clarity of what we would say that area one typically is. And when you look at this map, you can see it kind of captures um, all of the, the larger lots that are out in this rural area.
So just to clarify, Baker Road and Baker Lane would be with which? Right now it's, I know, go to Hudson Prairie.
So Rivercrest. So I think we took 94 and then basically where?
So you came up here, right, Rob?
Correct.
There's the divider, right there. Everything to the east was an area one.
Every, everything to the east of this line, he considered area one that was 65 students.
Area west, west.
West.
Uh, west, sorry, sorry.
West, 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 west.
Sorry. West of area, uh, west of that marker, it's 65 kids, that's area one.
Okay. And why is Baker Road and Baker Lane part of that?
It's 94 is the dividing factor.
Yeah, main 94.
I know, and I'm going back to N because isn't N how those kids?
No, because what we heard from, we heard from people in this area during the committee process that N was not a good divider. Because especially out to the east is because they, it was, they consider that one neighborhood.
I understand that, I understand that to the east. But if you look at Baker Road and Baker Lane, they're all exclusively north of N. It's one neighborhood north of N. So if you're going to have a bus that's going around Cottonwood there with Settlement Drive and Yost and all those, it's going to go up N and then take 12 up to go to Hudson Prairie. That bus can't go on Baker Road and pick up the kids.
Or it could just shoot up Kenny Road and go down Badlands and avoid, avoid Carmichael altogether.
It goes up Baker Road now.
Yeah, so. Yeah, I mean, so it's, it's a, we're just telling you, this is, this is where the 65 kids came from. We can absolutely have them draw something up that excludes those kids. I don't think we're talking handful.
Right.
Fewer than five. I mean, you know, maybe a few, maybe, maybe some more than that.
Right.
But the bulk of the kids are.
And in five years, it could be none, right? Because that's the whole thing about how these neighborhoods age. I mean, you, you mentioned that, that you're trying to project these out and turnovers and neighborhoods and everything. Um, so we've got to balance something that's not just building utilization, but also longevity of, of the boundary changes. Do we want to be doing this again in four years?
So, I mean, what I'm hearing you say as a board, and I don't want to put words, is you want us to give you all of the data as it relates to one, in and out of Rivercrest, as it relates to staffing, by grade level, who it impacts, all those different components? Is that what I'm hearing you say? And no other areas at this point? Is area B done? And I just, just so we understand, the rationale for looking at Area One, because it would probably go against your first three priorities.
Hey, Nick, I think the ask, at least from my perspective, is to bring it forward for final considerations. That doesn't mean that that would be, I mean, people still have a chance to make a final recommendation or vote on the option that they choose. And it doesn't mean that that might be what they would vote for. But to have that data, to have that view for consideration before going into the final meeting, I think would be good for us to have. That's, that's what I'm asking for. It doesn't, doesn't mean that I've decided, like, that's what I'm going to vote on. I just want to see what the data is and use it for consideration.
But not want data on any of those other areas? I mean, I just, I'm just trying to understand, as, we will get the calls and things, is why are you looking at Area One, and you're not looking at the one area up by McCutcheon's, and why are you not looking at B? And, I mean, I guess that's what I'm just, I want to make sure that...
I'll speak to it specifically for me, okay? I'm one of seven. For the most part, I think back to the referendum that we had for the high school. And, you know, the, one of the loudest areas of concern was south of ninety-four, going, you know, north of ninety-four, or in that case, it would have been north of ninety-four, coming south of ninety-four. Now, I know at some point in time, when you get to middle school and high school, that's going to happen, right? I live in Holton. My kids had about a five-minute bus ride. They now have about an hour bus ride. It's not fun for them. It's part of, you know, going through the transitions. But for me, it's, you know, having that proximity, at least for those early years, south of ninety-four, and that's one of the main reasons, at least, for me.
So, just, just Area One, just one last time, because I don't want to get to the January meeting and have board members say, boy, I really wish you would have had data on this area.
I would say, since that's what the committee asked us to do, that's, that's what I would like to have the numbers for.
So, Area One, correct?
Yes.
And Nick, you asked about what data by grade. I don't, I guess what I would like is to have enough data that whatever decision we make, we can explain why we made it referencing our criteria. That's, and so, I feel like that's, that's what I would want to walk out of that board meeting with, is feeling like I could explain how we came to the decision we came to, based on the criteria.
Perfect.
And I would, I would want to know what the, adding those numbers back in would do to the longevity of this whole process, as far as an estimate on years, because we don't want to do it again in two years, like happened before.
Okay, perfect. I think, I mean, we have enough information, we'll, you know, direction. Rob, do you have anything else?
Nope, it's good.
Okay.
Any other questions or concerns from anyone? I guess hearing none, then I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, we are adjourned.